Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of 27 August 2013. Today, we'll cover a number of items, some license applications, some appointments, abatements. We have a discussion with our Energy Committee representatives. Talk about focused areas for the Board of Selectmen over this coming year, as well as a number of infrastructure projects that we've covered in the past, and a lot of these are simply updates. We have had two off-camera meetings since before today. However, while I'd normally kind of recap what we covered, since we're going to be covering many of the same topics today, only giving updates, I thought it'd be repetitive, so we'll bring you up to speed based on today's agenda. We'll begin with community forums. Anyone here for a community forum? Okay. We have minutes approval.
Minutes. I move we accept the minutes of August 13, 2013.
I'll second.
Have any?
I just, I have one. If I said this, that's fine, but just a clarification. Chief Beldon asked if the town, this is on the top of the second page, had a personnel committee, and Chairman Boyle said the Human Resource Advisory Committee will serve that purpose. Just want to make clear, if there's any legal authorities that a personnel board has, our HR advisory committee does not have. It's, as the title states, simply an advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen. It's not a policymaking, it doesn't make decisions, it makes recommendations. But subject to that clarification. Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of 13 August?
I'll second it. I have one correction on there. Second page, Planning Board hearing on the labby, Selectman Lesko said a conservation commission issue should be, there may be a conservation issue on the property. That's all I have there.
Anything else?
That's it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Morning, Jan.
Begin with liquor license, Mr. Pachar. He needs a license here, application for a three-day liquor license for an event on the 7th of September. It's a benefit. Any questions for Mr. Pachar?
I just got one question on the second-
Would you like to come up so we can capture you on the microphone? Thank you.
Tony, on the second page where, and this isn't really for Tonys, but it states here a person holding a special license, license, whoops, I'm sorry, no more than one, the third one down on the second page. So there's no more than one license can be issued for a premises at one time, therefore Section 14 special license cannot be issued for use. And I'm taking that as the premises being the building, and he wants to do it outside the building. I just want to be clear.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay, so that's the way it is. With that, I move that we issue a three-day liquor license to Anthony Pachar for Girl and Chill, 127 Elm Street, real park, rear parking area, wine and malt. And this is to benefit the Alheimers Disease, must be a-
Benefit.
Benefit, yeah. Program or something they have going.
Yep. They do a yearly motorcycle ride out of Elijah's Pub, and this year they want to include the Girl and Chill as one of the stops.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, I did coordinate with Chief Osley, and although this says Benefit Organizer has hired a state police detail officer, he's-
For the whole day, he's there, yeah.
In the future, though, we're going to coordinate all this.
The organizer is going to have their officer follow them each stop, other than talking to Osley for an half an officer to stay on the site, because we might do our own little party, just to keep it going for a couple hours after the motorcycle guys leave.
Okay, thank you.
You're not going to have music out there or anything like that, are you, Tony?
I don't, we haven't talked about it. I don't know what else entails with licenses or-
Because outside music, when's the event?
7th of September.
How long is it until 7?
The motorcycle riders will be there at about 1, 1 to 2 o'clock.
What time's the event get through?
8:00 PM.
If we do anything afterwards, it would be for a couple hours.
Okay.
Nothing past, nothing past that.
I got 8:00 PM, that's fine. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's an application for an auctioneer's permit for Mr. Donald Roucher for an auction, proposed auction on 14 September at 186 North Hatfield Road. Is there a motion to approve the application?
I move we approve the application for the auctioneer's license of 143, whoops, I'm sorry.
186 North Hatfield.
At 186 North Hatfield Road. This is the whole inch property.
Is there a second? All right. Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I have a couple of appointments. First appointment to the local cultural council. We previously appointed Mr. Ken Longstreet to a one-year term, and the town clerk indicates this should be a three-year term.
I move-
So at time, is there a motion to amend the term of appointment of Mr. Ken Longstreet to the local councilor council from a one to three years?
I move that we amend the contract from a one to a three-year contract.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that the paperwork should be already with that, and I'm not sure, we did have it as a one-year on our sheet, but for some reason didn't say three last week, because that's what we went by. And I'd like to see, make sure that we're corresponding with the town clerk to make sure that this is right, so we don't have to keep doing this over again.
Okay.
Thanks.
Another-
Favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Medical marijuana study group, or?
Okay, I do have, a couple of things happened. All right. Lydia, I was happening to be in the office, signed the warrants the other day, and she said that the town meeting only voted for five members. I noticed your note or your email that we can have-
We knew that all along.
Yeah.
But we knew that we needed the planning board represented.
So Greg, Greg said that he would be there irregardless, he would be there, but we can appoint him as a, as an officier or whatever.
Well, town council says we could appoint him anyway, since it's simply an advisory group.
Okay. All right, so that's, that's not a problem, then he can stay there.
So, did he actually resign?
He actually gave Lydia a paper that he resigned, so, but we could ask him to withdraw his resignation. That's all. So we're not, we didn't act on it yet.
Okay, I was, okay, we haven't, all right. All right, well, that's, will you talk to him or something?
I'll talk to him.
And I have confirmed, I sent you Bill O'Neill's note, it's not a problem.
He even said that, you know, he would follow through and attend our meetings and stuff like that, and be the, go between the planning board and that, so we can prepare that. I also want to let everybody know that for the licensed healthcare professional, Carol Keller, she sent me an email back that she would go ahead and be on the committee. She's a registered nurse, and she's helped out on many events, and so on. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to move that we appoint Carol Keller to the committee of 10 Elm Court.
Any second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So we have a full complement there.
We have a full, right.
In this group, we have Mr. Lesko representing the Board of Selectmen, Ellen Bakina, Board of Health, Ms. Keller is a licensed healthcare professional, Tom Osley representing Chief Police, Sony Enforcement Officer Stanley Sodowsky, and Mr. Greg Winters representing the planning board.
Right. And I will be calling the first meeting very shortly to get us on board here.
Ms. Prado is here and left.
She said just come and talk.
Actually, or handling appointments. Do you want to come back to that?
Yeah.
Since, I'd like, unless someone has objection, we've got two individuals here for, for discussion. Is anyone else coming from the Energy Committee, or are you representing?
Mike should be here. I don't know why he's not here. He should come.
Well, all right, want to wait a little while, we'll wait a little while.
Can we wait a few minutes?
Sure.
Because I'd be surprised if Mike wouldn't show up.
Okay. The objection, we take Mr. Oll out of turn here. Let's see. It's Mr. Mike Oll, Comprehensive Engineering, or Environmentalist, and going to talk about Mas Works and-
And the water transmission.
Water Transmission Line.
So, first off, on the transmission main, the project was, bids were opened three weeks ago, roughly, on the 7th. I believe you should have a copy of our-
Yes.
-bid results and the recommendation. We actually, I was very pleased, we received 10 bids, and the prices ranged from just over 1.4 million up to 1.8 million. And there was a nice cluster of bids, so it wasn't as if the low bidder was, you know, much lower than the others, and may have missed something. Our estimate for the project was 1.5 million, so we felt very comfortable with the pricing that came in. The low bidder was Gilaher Enterprises out of Southampton. They did have one math error on their bid, and it's really a technicality. The contract documents are set up to handle those types of situations. They put in a written, both in numbers and in words, unit price for a particular item, and in this case, it was the 16-inch water main. And we have an estimated quantity for all the items. In that case, it was 9,200 feet. When they did the math to come up with the total for that line item, it wasn't correct. They were lower than what the actual math would give you. So this contract documents are set up so that the unit price that they write for that item governs, so that you, they owe the town that unit price at the estimated quantity, and you simply adjust their bottom line accordingly.
So on a typo, you can legally do that?
Yes. And that's actually been gone through the Attorney General's Office in terms of bid protests of that nature.
I notice it's about $20,000 difference.
Yeah, exactly. So there, the price that we have in front of the board is the adjusted corrected price, their total bottom line. And we did check references for them. They have a mix of water main experience, some of it's very focused site development type work, where they would have been doing roads and all the site utilities, but they have also done some municipal water main work. All the references that we did contact, which were a mix of those, gave them glowing reviews in terms of a contractor being responsive and doing a good quality job. So, based on that, our recommendation is to award it, the contract, to Gilaher Enterprises for that price of 1.4, 1,433,330 dollars.
Any other questions for Mr. Oll?
Okay, so that, that takes into consideration the error.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, and the next one up was, what, 1466?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
And there were, I think, three or four, the three or four lowest bidders were all right, you know, right under the 1.5 million. So it was a very tight bid. And the unit prices that Gilaher Enterprises bid for each item were realistic. Sometimes contractors will penny a particular item. There were none of those games, I'll call it, being played. They're, they're straight up priced.
Is there a motion to approve award of the Water Transmission Main Phase 1 contract to Gilaher Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of 1,433,330 dollars?
So moved.
Second?
Was second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mas Works.
Well, before we move off of Mas Works, here are the original bids, whoever, there's the actual bid forms and unit of bid bonds.
Do you have a signature, signature sheet for us?
Yes.
Okay.
And separately, we'll be pulling together the contracts for the contractor design. The normal routine is we'll send them to the contractor, they'll get their bonds and insurance together, and then they'll come back before the board for formal signature as a contract.
When's work to begin?
Based on talking to Gilaher Enterprises, they were finishing up jobs in September, so they're ready to hit the ground running, you know, end of the month, end of September into October, which is about the time it'll take to get contracts signed.
Okay.
So, a lot, we got a lot of interest from people that were excited about having this project happen during the winter, which I think is reflected in the 10 bids.
Those and avoiding that probably why we got a good deal on it.
Yeah, I think so. But just to then jump into kind of the rest of the project.
Where do we stand with the?
Yeah, the jacking.
The jacking.
It's a process, so the next phase is getting across 91, and the railroad, and the Mill River, and then eventually making the connection near Plain Road on Chestnut. And as you remember, we had a shift in plans, because the original concept was to go into, go, put the water main in an existing utility bay on Mas DOT's bridge over 91. But they, Mas DOT identified structural issues with that, with their bridge. So we're pursuing the jacking, and-
Is there any way we can go back after them and see if they can give us a little money towards that? And the reason I say that is because back when they built 91, they were asked to put a sleeve underneath the road, and they refused to put it. And now we have the problem-
Yes, it's a, the best option for that would be kind of from a state rep approach.
Okay.
I'm not going to get anywhere on something like that. But there are increased costs because of it. It's a more expensive endeavor to go under than to simply insulate and put it over. And right now, we, it's a multi-step process. We have a plan in front of Mas DOT. We have to do additional borings on the alignment of the proposed jacking, just to document what we all know is out there in terms of the soils. And then, based on that information, submit an actual jacking plan to Mas DOT. I'm anticipating that that whole process will be going on through this fall, with the hope that we'll be bidding by the end of the year. And because it's a shorter construction time period, it's something that can happen in the winter into spring. The hope is that we can still end up completing it all.
You're under the frost line anyway, so-
Pardon?
You're under the frost line anyway, so they don't-
Correct.
No problem. What's the difference in cost between the two?
Just for the jacking itself, it's over 200,000 is what I'm estimating.
How much is the difference between the two?
Over 200,000. Just between, for that section of the project, the difference between the original concept of putting it on the bridge-
Yep.
-and going underground through this jacking process, the additional cost, I'm estimating it over 200,000.
200,000, okay.
So that kind of, I wanted to give you a heads up, I think we got good pricing on this first phase, but there wasn't a lot to spare in the original appropriation, you know, a normal contingency. So I'm getting concerned that once we bid the next phase, we may be bumping up against the limits of the appropriation. And we'll know that better as we, once we bid the, the next phase of the project.
When's that going to happen?
I'm, given Mas DOT's normal review period, I'm hoping by the end of the year that the next phase would be out to bid.
Can we go under some kind of an emergency manner, because I hate to even think about that whole thing.
Well, at this point, it doesn't, it wouldn't be of any real benefit, because the anticipated construction schedule for the Rocks Road portion is about 10 months. So we're figuring that's scheduled right now to be in and complete by, say, June of next year. So if we get this other phase out to bid by the end of the year, it has a shorter construction period, so we still may be able to have that phase finish about the same time, and have it all ready to go summer of next year.
I don't have any other questions.
So that's all I have for the Transmission Main, unless somebody has any other questions. The other topic was the Mas Works, Mas Works grants, and the, we had submitted applications the past couple of years. First year was pretty aggressive plan, just to get it out in front of the state, see what the reaction was, covering water and sewer along West Street, taking care of lack of sewer for the port, major portion of that area, and then, and insufficiently sized, an old water main that runs up on West Street. Feedback we got the first year was way too expensive for their program, they just didn't have that kind of money. The estimate was 12 million, 12.7, I think it was, total. We scaled back to the minimum we could feasibly do and still have a workable project, which was extending water and sewer up to a cluster of parcels right around that same Chestnut Street area. And the beauty of that was, there's available parcels there that are zoned appropriately already for commercial industrial use, and the water main that we just spoke about is already going by there. So the additional water main to serve those parcels would be minimal. The big cost was the sewer. And I can just, I brought the maps, which would kind of refresh everybody's memory. What we were talking about was, this is showing the full extent of the project, and we split it into phases. So this green portion is the Transmission Main that's already being done separately. We noted it in the application, because the state was looking for shared contributions. So the town's invested significantly in this, to the tune of 2.4 million through that one appropriation. Then what we were saying is, this is that shaded area, the parcels potentially available for development right now, and what would it take to serve those? Sewer showing sewer service to here, and a short extension of water to come down to the southern extent of it. That was last year's application. This is a blow-up of that area, just highlighting the Phase 1 work. This orange line is the sewer connecting down to Lindsay, where the existing sewer ends right now. And then the water would be served through this new Transmission Main and a short stub going south. That whole project, Phase 1, actually, I'll flip over to here, is this, which is the water and sewer. We're estimating it at just under 2 million. This is the piece that we went and submitted to Mas Works, saying, you know, we have a viable project, it'll spur economic development, increase tax revenues, and jobs, which is the focus of that, one of the focuses of the program. And putting these together, because they're really part of what you need to serve that first parcel, this is the Water Transmission Main. The total appropriation, 2.4, plus there was a separate appropriation for the design money, so all that was just over 2.5 million. This, we were able to demonstrate that the town was, you know, contributing over 50% of the project cost. Even with that, the state came back and said, still a lot of money, given what they have to spread out amongst the whole state. And they flagged some specific issues. One is lack of a, an identified private developer that you could name that would say, I'm going to build here, or expand my business here, and I personally have plans to, you know, create so many jobs and so much in tax revenues. We don't have, we did not have that. The other part of it was, the, there was a concern raised, I guess through Mas DOT. Through this program, we are trying to present the best-case scenario in terms of potential jobs created. Mas DOT flagged, hmm, I wonder if there's going to be traffic impacts in terms of increased traffic loads on that stretch of West Street, and off of those two ramps, one north and south of it. So, you know, fast forward to today, the new application's been out. It's due through an electronic process, September 3rd through the 13th, so that's right on the corner. We still do not have an identified private entity that we can point to, and, you know, hold up as kind of a poster child of why this project should be funded. We're still talking about the same costs. Can't make the project realistically any smaller and still have it be viable. So the other thing that came out in this most recent application was, there's a very specific focus on that private developer. They've expanded that section of, you know, now instead of just the brief description, they've got details, like who is it, how many jobs, where, what, et cetera. And it, it's in line with what we saw the past two years in terms of the awards. The communities that got the awards did have a private developer that was contributing, possibly financially in some way, and was able to say, we're, it's real. And then the other thing that was interesting this year is, there's a very big push in the application, focus on housing. And even though there's still separate categories between economic development, housing, and then there's still a separate category for small-town transportation safety projects, there's a very specific question on the housing. And if your project is not, does not include, you know, high-density housing, which is really the focus, then, so much explain why not, and where else in the community is that housing being met or addressed? It seemed like that we may be able to answer that question, because in concept, I guess, there has been discussion about doing some housing, high-density housing redevelopment, but it just shows where the focus of the program is. So, getting back to the current grant application, we can certainly resubmit this.
This is new housing you're talking about, right?
Yeah, and the state's focus in their documents is on high-density, so they want four units per acre. They're really trying to look at, you know, kind of the village, mixed-use, some redevelopment. You know, when you look at the projects that were funded, someone that was, the infrastructure money was going to support redevelopment of a village, mixed-use area, seemed to get the awards.
They wouldn't do anything with our water protection, or we're- They wouldn't do anything with, uh, our water protection, our, uh, subsurface water?
Oh, the aquifer protection?
Aquifer protection.
Now, the program doesn't cover that at all. You don't get any credit for that. The only program that I know that does that is through the Clean Water SRF program.
Is there something that we can go through them? Because right now, I mean, between the septic systems that have been failed out there and in the past few years, and there's a lot of money put into that, and it really needs to be, the septic systems need to be gone away, and we need to get sewer in there.
Yeah, there is.
No question about it. Just to protect the aquifer.
I mean, the Clean Water SRF program is there, but it's not a grant program. It's a 2% loan.
A loan, yes.
So...
Wow, okay.
So I have, we can resubmit this, address the housing question, and, you know, see what happens, but my, I'm not feeling optimistic.
Well, we guarantee, I, look, I'm the one that's kind of trying to push this along. One, I understand this time around, uh, the prospects are even perhaps less than, than before. But if we don't put something in, we're guaranteed we won't get anything.
Right, right.
And, uh, most of this information that we already, we've done in the previous submission is online, so it's a matter of, it's not a major, it's not a cold start. It's simply updating some information.
Right, but the supporting documentation is right here.
We have nothing to lose by keeping our order in the water here. Yes, sir.
One comment, I'm aware of a landowner in that area who wants to put in that type of housing along Route 5. They've talked to me about it privately a number of times, and if you want that information, I'd be happy to pass it on to you. You can follow up with, with that particular landowner who has the resources to do this job.
But it can't be done without sewer.
That would be exactly the case study.
We, we also had a mixed-use development article at town meeting that unfortunately got shot down with some misinformation that was presented and went uncorrected.
But we're bringing that back.
We're bringing that back this, this coming year. Well, I, I'm recommending that we get a submission in. We have nothing to lose whatsoever. It's not an emergency. I, I move that we update our prior submission and submit an application for this year's round of Mass Works.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
No.
That's it? All in favor?
Aye.
We can certainly put that back in, and any...
Certainly get it back in. David, you'll get some information for us?
Sure. Who should I give that to?
You can bring it to Paul or Phil, one or the other.
Okay.
Just get it to one of us, and we'll get it to Mike.
Yeah, sooner the better, because again, September 3rd through the 13th, there is still time, you know, if, if there's even a potential that somebody's been talking about that, that'd be great for years, yeah.
Just, one more thing I have. Mike and I had a conversation earlier this week about the use of the center school. So I don't know if you want to throw that in the mix, Mike?
Yeah.
Because we received a grant for the feasibility study over there.
That, that's ideal, too, because that answers the question of, well, even if this project isn't specifically addressing housing, where else in town is it being addressed?
As long as we have enough room in the sewage treatment plant to accommodate everything. And that's something I think we need to look at, see, Maguire may have the total gallons, or Brian might have it up there, what the total gallons we can use in there.
All the more reason to deal with I and I.
Absolutely.
Colonial Acres.
Right.
Keep kicking the can.
All related.
Increase the capacity without having to invest anything in the plant. All right, so you're gonna work with Mike and cutting that down? Great. Anything else for us, Mike?
That's all I have today.
Always a pleasure.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Paul, can we, let's take up center school out of sequence?
Center School?
Do we want to check to see if she's done something in front with the town clerk? Can I have key? Oh, I have keyhole.
Yes, Center School.
All right, we can caveat our appointment.
The, um, the committee convened last Wednesday. We met with Jim Maisick of Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, who was, you know, guiding us through this process. And he had a draft request for proposals to hire a consultant to do two things, three things, actually. First, do a, a general conditions evaluation of the building, you know, see where it's lacking in code, any, any types of problems like that. Issue a report regarding the condition of the building. Next, to do a market analysis, in terms of, well, what is the, what is the best use for this building? Is it housing? Is it commercial? Could it be mixed-use or office space? You know, the market analysis will tell us that. And then third, uh, you know, once the market analysis is completed and, you know, the committee identifies, you know, the best use for the building, then they will go through and develop, you know, schematic designs for, for what they believe, uh, the, you know, the layout should be for the building, for whatever, for whatever purpose, you know, the study comes up with. So, um, so we went, the, so Jim came in with a draft RFP. The committee went through the RFP, made some minor changes to it, and it has subsequently been submitted to the central register for advertisement. We will be putting an ad in the Gazette as well. And the proposals will be due on September 25th. We're going to have a walkthrough with all those who are interested in the project on the, on September 17th. And then the committee will meet again on October 8th to review the proposals and select a consultant. And that's where we're at.
Okay, so the strategy is, we're gonna do this as one, one complete end-to-end package.
Correct.
We're not going to segment one contractor to do one piece, like the facility assessment, and then another to do the market analysis.
Right.
One outfit will do.
Yeah, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission designed the RFP to do just that. They have found, through their wealth of experience, these sorts of projects.
I agree.
That's, that's the way to do it. So we'll probably, what we'll, we will have, most of the proponents will probably be architectural firms, but then it's, whoever they are, they will be subcontracting with a marketing firm to do that piece of it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Good.
We have a volunteer for...
Yes, I can get Betty over here?
Michael, could you switch?
Mr. Dabbs, he invited me here this morning, and I'm here because for the last two years I've heard nothing about Center Street School, and where are you with that? As you know, I spoke at town meeting two years ago, and I'm very interested in seeing the town maintain that, but it's just sitting there, and I want to know what progress, if any, has been made, and why no progress has been made.
Well, I'd be glad to cover that. One, uh...
And I'm going to be honest with you, we're gonna move up here, the acoustics in this room are absolutely dreadful. I cannot view it. I know I'm hard of hearing, but I've got the same problem, so I'm hearing an echo.
We agree, and we look for your support to continuing the phased upgrade of the Town Hall, which is another project.
Yes, I know. That's why I'm worried about whether the horse is already out of the barn, or the barn has door has been closed because you're renovating the Town Hall.
Well, as you know, we've, we've first, and you spoke for this, proposed using the center school for municipal purposes, for town offices, for meeting rooms, for a variety of, of, of town purposes. That was defeated. We subsequently came back to town meeting and asked, "Well, do you want us to rent it, or do you want us to sell it?" And the resounding answer was, "Look at rental and retain the property." We went out for bids to rent, and it's not a matter of something, you can just stick a sign out front, there's a process given town property we have to go through. We had one respondent, it was the charter school, and after the charter school got in there and did the facility assessment, they determined what that would cost, plus they determined they'd need to build in addition, and became too costly. So that effort has gone, they withdrew from consideration. So finally, we applied for and have received an economic development grant from the state to conduct the study that Mr. Budrow was just talking about. For, it's twofold. One, what are the best potential reuses for that facility? And what, what is the facility condition with respect to those uses? What would need to be done to bring it up to code, or bring it up to being a viable facility for a particular purpose? And that's what we're doing right now, and there's a small committee, and we're very pleased that you volunteered to...
Happy to serve.
Serve on the committee to fill the fifth position.
I'm very interested in seeing that preserved. I mean, it is your center of your town.
Absolutely.
And I really would hesitate to, you know, I know if it's in such a state of disrepair that cost-wise, it may not be a feasible solution for the town, but I think it would be a great mistake if we don't preserve that for...
Actually, we had an individual from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission who was helping us with, in managing this grant that we received, walked through that, and he's done this in a number of other communities, and he was very impressed about the condition, the physical condition of the school. That it was in good condition. He was surprised it was in such good condition at this point. So that was very positive.
Well, that's good, isn't it?
So in any event, we have a group, we've already kicked off, they've had their first meeting, and look forward to you joining them. And this would be to assess, as he was pointing out, potential bidders to do the study about what are the potential reuses, what are the facility needs that would be made to award that contract. So this group would be looking at criteria to use to assess the...
I'd be happy to join the group if you would have me. And I don't know what the next meeting is.
8th of October, and...
Well, actually, we'll be having, we'll be having a walkthrough on September 17.
Well, Mr. Budrow will make sure we, you get notified.
I have a 28 Elm for us.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you taking your time to inform me. I think it, you know, it's something that I'm interested in.
Good to have you come forward.
I hope it's the last service I can perform for this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's why I knocked on your door.
Thank you, Judge. Is there subject to town clerk performing her duties? Is there a motion to appoint Judge Parata, Elizabeth Parata of Elm Street, to the center school reuse study group?
I'm moved.
Candace?
I'll second it.
Second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Energy plan.
We're skipping our, changing our order here, but don't hold you up.
Well, we just, we had agreed to come back today.
I understand.
And so we're back. You're probably sick of seeing, you're probably sick of seeing us, but we're back.
No, no one's sick of seeing you. What we are concerned about is moving ahead, and meanwhile, the clock ticks.
Right, well, we, we had...
When we left after the last meeting, the energy group was going to have some discussion with town administrator, kind of see, you know, and get in sync with what he has been doing on his own initiative with regard to our, our energy plan.
Right.
And the energy initiatives. And of course, the objectives here are, one, to rebase line our plan, since it was a five-year plan, the five years are over. Needs to be rebase lined with a new year, base year. We, we need a new plan with new initiatives, and we need a report. No report was submitted last year in November.
It was incomplete report.
Our incomplete report was submitted. The state D O E R is gonna waive that, looking forward to a more fulsome and accurate report coming in, in this November. So as we left last session, the energy committee was going to meet with Paul to kind of sync up as to where, where he is and where you are, and get the whole thing...
We came and remembered Paul, but he didn't show up. Right, I'm in the dark. We posted, we were here on the 22nd at a lot, at the scheduled time.
And that was Tuesday, wasn't it, Mike, or something like that?
I don't know, but I guess...
Was that the day you were out with your mother?
Oh, this was last week.
Had, had that been coordinated with Paul?
Not, no, no.
Well, what do you mean, no? Yes, I mean, it was a posted meeting to meet...
Did you coordinate with him to be at...
I knew nothing about the meeting.
How could you know nothing about the meeting? It was a posted meeting. It was at, it was at the specific time for 10 o'clock, so that you would be here and we would be here, and we could...
I don't, I don't go out and look at that board all that often.
Okay. As town administrator, you don't do that?
No.
All right, well, I guess it's my fault then.
Well, the other, the other thing was, it was, his mother died.
No, it wasn't mother died, it was another issue. It was, it was a different day with a different issue.
I, I mean, I knew nothing about the meeting.
Well, says a little about coordination. That's kind of where we are in this whole thing.
Why don't we start over here and get a meeting with Paul to get based on?
So, that's what was to happen after the last...
So, and at our last meeting, too, it was, it was reported, I don't know if this is a rumor or what, but has David Major been hired to, to work on this project?
No, no.
All right, then that's a rumor. Um, all right, we'll post again, uh, we will...
Please coordinate with Paul as to time and date and place, so he can put it on his schedule.
Yes. And we'll meet and we'll find out where we're at.
Do you want to cover a couple of things that you've been working on?
Well, yeah. I was going to bring the, kind of bring the board up to date and...
Well, bring it up when they're here, so they have a sense of where we're at.
Yeah. So being a green community, we have to submit an annual report every year. So we... I submitted the annual report last year. It's due in November. But it was incomplete because, you know, we were nowheres near making the 20% reduction goal that was outlined in the original plan. Some of those projects that were outlined in the original plan were deemed to be, you know, not feasible. The project that would have actually gotten us the most bang for the buck was the heat exchange system at the wastewater treatment plant. Well, I've talked to a couple of people since then who said, "Well, that doesn't make any sense. There's a whole bunch of different ways to go about this." So I don't know what went wrong there, but we're revisiting that. So I need to submit the annual report...
Well, if I just could interrupt, that was a recommendation of the energy committee to do that project, because we are only advisory, as we had discussed last time. We will recommend the projects now, going forward, and then it will be up to you three gentlemen to speak to the department heads or whoever needs to push these things through. We don't have the power, or the control, or the authority to do that.
I understand. Fair enough. Fair point. However, it's incumbent on you and coming up with projects to have some discussion with whoever is expected to execute just as a feasibility test.
Yeah. Well, that's... No, that's not...
It's, oh, you're in one little silo and independent of it. There needs to be that communication.
Yeah, absolutely. But again, if, I mean, the money from the first round of grants was available at the time, there was... My understanding was that there was skepticism and pushback at the department level, and so that never... that project never developed.
If we're... not to belabor this one, is this the one with the building inspector?
On the roof, right.
Some issue about...
This is a unit that wanted to go on a roof, and he said it didn't want it on a roof.
Yeah. So anyway...
And they don't... these things don't... they're typically mounted in the wall. So I don't know what happened there, but we're revisiting that one. We're revisiting that one. Anyways, so I need to submit another annual report in November, and I also need to submit an updated energy plan at the same time. So I'm working on that now. So we are changing the baseline to fiscal year 10, which is, you know, is as far back as we can go at this point, because, you know, we were designated as a green community in 10. So I have to, you know, realign the baseline and, you know, getting all that information out of the Mass Energy Insight site. So I'm working on that. In the meantime, I was approached by a company called Guardian Energy, and they're going around working with communities, developing energy conservation projects. They're mostly working out in central areas, from what I understand, but they're trying to come out this way. Basically, what they come in, they come in and do audits of buildings for free, and they will develop projects, you know, to go into an energy plan and help communities, you know, put the grant application together for green community money. So they do all this for free. There's a loophole in the procurement laws for providing energy services, and if a project's under $10,000, then they can, you know, they can do the work. So I'm working with them. They're developing some projects for different buildings. We're looking at the heat exchange system at the wastewater treatment plant. We're looking at installing some window quilts in the cafeteria down at the elementary school. They've identified a number of projects at both schools. They were just at both schools last Friday. They've got, you know, three or four projects identified at the schools, at each school. Because we also need to incorporate the MSBA window replacement project at Smith in this plan as well. They've also identified putting in an on-demand water system over the fire department, because they have a tank that they keep heated all the time, and it's hardly used, so it doesn't make too much sense. So they've identified a number of projects to go into the plan, and, you know, in the process now are crunching numbers. So we'll have something fairly soon that everybody can look at.
Do you have a contact?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'd like to speak to them if I could.
Sure. Sure. Yeah.
They have a website?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. They do. But yeah, yeah. I'll shoot you an email.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay.
I look forward to having more communication and interaction with the town about what's going on and what we can do, because these are great projects. We're saving the town money, okay, and energy, and sort of developing awareness of that. My whole life is about that. I want to see this go forward, guys. So I'm going to visit you more, Paul.
Great. I'd love to have you, Dave.
Especially if I had more time.
So I guess I will call you, and then we'll coordinate before I post the meeting.
Okay.
We'll do that. So I'll call you later today.
Okay. Great.
After you get out of here. And then we should be all set.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much for your time. Okay. We're all set? We're all set?
Good. Let's get back into sequence here. Topic four. We talked about some focus areas. This was the list we came up with after our last meeting. Anyone have any other thoughts?
No. I think that's plenty to be focusing on. Actually, it's probably too much, but we'll get as much as we can done.
Right.
And these are just ongoing projects, ongoing things that we've been working on in the past.
Do you have any comment?
I had just one little thing.
Yeah.
as far as the DPWN goes, the... I noticed the brush is piling high again, and we should be getting that cut down, but I think we have to get to a point of making up signs and have this thing open on a weekend, because there's people coming in there after hours. And I mean, when after hours, I'm talking late at night, and I don't know where they're coming from. And I don't think a lot of people know where these people are coming from. And they're throwing their brush in the pile and expect us to pay to have it chopped up. So it's not that... I'm not denying the residents, but in some cases, if it's a homeowner and they hire somebody to do it, well, the guy doesn't have a chipper, he's going to haul it up to us to chip. He's making the money, but we're going to spend the money on chipping the brush. So I think that's something that we should look in over the next year. As far as fencing, I don't really think we need fencing, but we could put some cables across.
Jan, Tony said there's a couple of gates hanging around that must have been from the reservoir.
And maybe there is.
There's a couple of gates. There's no reason we couldn't put a couple of gates up there and just, you know, cement them in, get them in the entranceway there. And then we can put the barricades, even if it's dirt, stopping them from coming in between the trees. I mean, there's... barricades are easier if we've got to do that.
Yeah. The only thing, we would have to coordinate it with the transfer station people to have them open the gate on a Saturday up there. And just let them, and then close it at the end of the day, and then just leave it closed during after hours and Sundays.
Right. Then the only other...
And see if we can put some kind of control. I mean, it's been a concern. I brought it up a couple of times about, you know, people coming from all over dumping brush in there.
I still think we ought to have a camera system put up that, up in that highway garage.
I know we could do that too.
Overlook the whole property for security.
You could do that too, but I mean, it seems like we're getting more brush, and I'm not sure where it's coming from.
Yeah. We waited to chip the pile until, you know, our summer help was done, because we cut all the trees along all the sidewalks. So we wanted to wait till then, and maybe during the fall cleanup, and then we'll have it chipped for the winter. But I think you're right. I mean, I think we have to control people coming in there.
Okay. So you're going to look at the fencing, or not fencing, but the...
The gates. Tony said that he has a couple of them. I know he said that... I'm pretty sure he said he had two or three of them.
You can just go ahead and do that. You got the gates, and then have the folks working the transfer station...
Yeah. They'll just have to open and shut it on a Saturday. That's all.
Open and close.
Just like to make one more comment, not regarding the fence, but the summer workers. They did one heck of a great job in the town. I'll tell you, if we could get them back again next year, that'd be a big plus for the town.
Well, they both have expressed interest to return, so...
Great.
They did a fabulous job. I just want to commend both of them for doing an excellent job. All of them, actually.
MSBA accelerated repair program? Paul?
Yep. In your packet is the submittal that was sent into the state by John Robert last week, just for your information. And I will actually be... I've got a meeting with John this afternoon. We have a teleconference with Ken Sullivan in the MSBA program. And I... my understanding is this conversation will be focused on selecting a consultant for the project, which seems a little backwards to me, since we don't really have a funded project yet. But I guess, you know, when you get into these programs, I mean, the school is funding the feasibility study, but the state, you know, will... has a list of selected consultants, and basically, they're going to pick the consultant that we're going to use, and that's what that conversation's going to be about this afternoon. So everything's been submitted, and, you know, basically waiting on the state at this stage of the game.
Back to the project's schedule. That's all been informally coordinated with MSBA?
Yes.
You know, the vote the authorization local funding is not till our next town meeting.
Right. Yeah.
It's supposed to be within 90 days of...
Yeah. So it's... it puts it like two weeks beyond the 90 days, and Superintendent Robert has talked to them, and they do not have an issue with that. So, yeah, I think the schedule is all quite doable.
Now, what... I'll share. I've read this thing too many times. What is it that the town is actually certifying? We signed the certification document.
Oh, that, you know, we'll be using a certified procurement officer...
Right. And informally, I was... they've agreed as long as you complete the course.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, it could be me. Hopefully, it's me. Could be somebody else, you know. But we're just saying that, yes, we will. We'll use a certified procurement officer, and I can't remember what the other one was. There were two certifications.
Wasn't there a...
Most of this is just... it's...
It's just a grant application.
Yeah. It's how the thing works.
Right.
As opposed to...
And if we get the grant, I think what, our share is 50%?
We get 50.2 or 50.0...
Roughly 50% is our responsibility.
Just over... We get, you know, the grant is 50.58%.
Okay.
All right. So...
Oh.
So Paul has already executed the certification of initial compliance. So now the only thing hanging is this MOU?
Correct. And, yeah, I had a draft. I had a draft in the packet, but made some revisions to it since. Pass that out. Yeah, in section three. Well, the original... So, yeah, let me, for everyone's benefit, so if we get the grant, we'll be getting reimbursements from the state. And some portion of the feasibility study will also be reimbursable, whether it's the 50.58, I'm not sure what it is. But the school's actually using its school choice money to fund the feasibility study. What they would like to have happen is when the reimbursements start coming into the town, because the reimbursements will come into the town, not the school, that whatever money the town gets reimbursed for the feasibility study will be returned to the school choice account. So the school committee contacted their town council, who drafted this memorandum of understanding, which basically says, "Yeah, if we get money, reimbursement money in for the feasibility study, we'll give all that money back to you." So section three here was... Jeff called me yesterday afternoon, and I read through it again, and I said, "Yeah, that's kind of confusing." So I rewrote it, and I think this, you know, makes it pretty clear.
My question, Paul, is that when the funds come in, they go into the general fund, does it have to be voted at town meeting to go into that account?
No. No. I talked to Mike about that, and he said, "No, he just make a, you know..."
Just a paper transfer?
Paper transfer. Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
What... I got confused reading the original language as to whether or not they are asking for funds in addition to their initial investment from the school choice. It was very confusing.
It was confusing.
And we didn't... wouldn't need to go to town meeting and all this anyway for...
Well, they do have to go to town meeting and take it out of school choice, I believe.
No.
No. No, they don't.
They can use that money anytime? Yeah.
That's... See, now, they helped us by doing that now, because otherwise, we would have had to go to town, create a special town meeting, simply to get money for the feasibility study, because we didn't have it.
Well, I mean, I'm in agreement. The state's here that they will use their school choice money for the grant...
All this is saying-
And everything.
They're looking for reimbursement for the investment they've made.
I'd like to move that we approve the memorandum of understanding that, between the school department and the board of selectmen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great.
Jeff, you can sign off on that.
Well, there's another article for town meeting.
Yes, yeah, well, that-
The town, the town has to put front the money for this activity, and then gets reimbursed in increments as it spends it.
Right, I mean, I, I see this as a-
Yeah, but if it can come through the, if it can come from the school of choice-
No, that's, no, 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 that's, that was just for the feasibility study. We're, we're talking about execution of this grant. Funding for the total project, we have to come up with that money, and then we will be reimbursed as we spend it. In increments of what, minimum $50,000 or something like that?
Yeah, yes, yes, so-
That's how the program works.
The feasibility study is specifically for a new roof and new windows at Smith Academy. So, I think we've been, you know, the number that's been banding, bandied about is around a million dollars, I guess. So, yeah, for town meeting, we'll, you know, I, I certainly see we're gonna have to borrow some of that money. Maybe we'll have some free cash that we can utilize as well, so I see, you know, one to two articles relating to the funding of this project.
All I'm, I'm, there's nothing new here, it's just how this, this grant works.
Yeah.
And just another for the list of town meeting articles.
Okay, so this MOU is only for the study, period?
For the study, period, yep.
That they get back-
Okay.
Their investment. Performance review, are we done?
Let me back, let me back, I'm not done yet. Let me back up on this MOU.
Okay.
All right. Usually the studies are 100% paid for by the grant.
No.
But this one isn't.
No, the, the town has to front all the bills, and then gets reimbursed over time through this grant.
Just for the study?
No, for the whole thing.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
For the whole thing.
The study, because if this only, if this only refers to the study, then the money that we get from the grant money for the study goes into the, goes into the school of choice fund.
That amount that we get reimbursed for the feasibility-
Yeah.
They're asking that that go to the school.
Okay, the way this is reading, it says the school agrees that they will utilize school of choice funds in order to complete a feasibility study, so what that tells me is that-
That amount that we get reimbursed from the state through this grant for that, that amount will go to the school.
But there's additional, how much is this feasibility study?
Well, we don't know yet, but-
See what, see what we're getting at here?
Let's say, let's say the feasibility study, they've, they've appropriated up to $100,000 for the feasibility study.
Okay.
Let's say the feasibility study costs $75,000, and let's say that through, through the state's formula, they're gonna reimburse the town of Hatfield for $40,000 of that. I don't think they're gonna, I, I don't think they're gonna reimburse the whole thing. So that $40,000 comes back to the town of Hatfield. See, it's not gonna go to the school, it, it's gonna come into our general fund. What they are asking is that, that money comes into the town, that that money be transferred back into school of choice, which is where it originally came from.
Is it originally coming from the school of choice?
Yes.
Yes, okay, yes.
Well, they're only reimbursing what they've put out, period.
Okay, yeah.
All right. I wasn't clear on that.
And they're only, they're only getting what we get for that purpose.
A little confusing. Yeah, okay, all right. I'll try to get those done within the next one or two weeks. They gotta get done.
I've, I've given Paul mine, and he can share with both of you.
I gave Paul the report. Phil's, so both of you can look at it, and I have Paul's.
Okay, great.
So we'll all sit down.
So your motion to approve ambulance abatement for the month of July, the amount of $3,444.04, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Did you second?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. TPW, we've already covered the water main, the garage roof.
The highway garage roof is complete, the site's clean, looks good, it came out well, so the invoice was submitted and is on the warrant, so.
Okay, water-
Make sure that's a separate invoice on our warrant, please, if you can.
It's coming out of the overlay account, so it'll be separate.
All right, 'cause I have to abstain from signing that one, I don't wanna sign it.
It'll be, it's, it'll be separate, 'cause like I said, the, the funding came out of an article for the overlay account, so.
Thank you.
Water tank restoration?
Water tank restoration project, the tank was cleaned and painted, came out well. The mixing system is on site, we're just waiting for the electric upgrades to run that system, so that will be ongoing, but the tank came out very well.
Prospect Street?
Prospect Street, Main Street, Prospect Street was reclaimed, drainage installed, the binder put down, paved, it's complete, there's a couple driveway aprons we have to do there, and a little bit of looming in Main Street, portion is done, overlaid. We just have to get the center line people in to paint the lines, which will be covered under chapter 90.
You're gonna paint them all, throughout the whole town?
Those two streets will be covered under chapter 90, and we're gonna look at the rest of the town while we have them in.
There really needs to be done, there's some, it's really nasty on some sprays.
Anything else?
Oh, we have the landfill permit. I gave you a copy in your packet.
What about the annual inspection reports?
I have to call them, because I, it, one part of this permit says it's a third-party inspection, so I have to see if that's true. And if so, we'll have to find a consulting firm that does that. Let me, I have to call DEP about this, and I have to call them anyways about our waistband compliance paperwork that was submitted, 'cause I haven't heard anything back on that either, so, but that was part of this.
Well, they acknowledged in the report, they got it on 11th of July.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just wait, it, it's separate from the permit, so.
Okay. All right, but anyway, you're gonna ensure that from now on, we do the annual inspection reports.
Yes.
How often is this waistband compliance plan?
It looks like it's just part of this.
Okay, well, you might, might check that. Anyway, we've got our permit for 10 years, just. Town hall renovations, Paul?
Okay. The building permit has been submitted for this project, and I actually, I just was speaking with the building inspector yesterday, and everything looks to be in order, though I don't believe he can issue the permit until we get the architectural access board issues taken care of, which leads me into the, the next part. Talked to the architect yesterday, they will be coming up this week, they need to take some measurements of doors, et cetera, of all those items that we're essentially looking to get a waiver from, and, you know, submit it with, with the materials we need to submit in order to get our, you know, written notification of the variance, so they'll, they'll be up this week, and I think the deadline to get this stuff into the architectural access board is a week from this Friday, 20th.
I, I misspoke yesterday.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was the 6th.
Okay.
It's actually the 20th.
The 20th, okay, so.
Later than the 20th.
All right, so, we, we have time, they're on, they're on top of it.
We meet on the 24th.
Yeah, they're on top of it, they'll be up this week, they need to take some measurements, so that, that's all in the works.
Let me, just, as I said, we had a couple meetings before this, and we've covered some of this ground before, but just to bring everybody up to speed, we did meet with the Department of Public Safety Architectural Access Board on the, I believe it was the 4th of August, it was the architect for the town hall renovation project and myself. And out of that, they asked us for certain additional information regarding the counters here in the town hall, they asked that we develop a couple of policies, border selectmen policies regarding use of rooms, one, that now at least issue a policy about keeping the doors open to the offices doing business with the public, and then another policy to be developed after phase one of the town hall renovation is complete, to emphasize the priority for public meetings will be the accessible room on this floor, and only by exception or overflow or something, may other non-accessible rooms be used for public meetings, and then when that's done, a requirement that provision be made to assist anyone with the ability to attend the meeting in that location. They gave us a waiver on making any change to the front entrance, outright variance. They asked for some additional information regarding handrails, and we're supposed to go back, and it was, they bounced around on terms of the timing, but essentially, we were given a five-year waiver on modification, reconstruction essentially of the ramps on the south side of the building, and an elevator here to make the facility fully, fully accessible. And throughout, however, there was clear indication from the chair, the signal he was trying to send was, they're looking forward to working with us, they're trying to help us make this happen, and, and they're trying not to be bureaucratic about it, but, but in fact, to get the job done in a mutually agreeable way, so it was a very, a positive session.
Thank you, Jeff.
Town hall garage?
So, so, so the next thing is, before the 20th, we need the-
We need to make that submittal.
That reply. Town hall garage.
Yes, the building permit for that project has also been submitted, and once again, I'm talking with the building inspector yesterday, he found it to be incomplete, and has sent it back to them. We had a construction meeting last week, pre-construction meeting last week, the contractor indicated that they would be on-site September 3rd, which is next Tuesday, but we'll, we'll see about that now, since there seems to be a bit of a problem with the building permit.
What's on, what was incomplete, Paul?
Stanley didn't indicate to me what was missing.
Well, I think we need to find out what's going on, and to help push this project along here, it's long overdue, and I don't want him to get in the way of something that's, that needs to, you know, that might be a simple fix, okay, and that-
Yeah, well, he, he told me he tried, he tried calling them, left several, several messages, and didn't get a call back, and so finally he decided, well, I'm just shipping it back to him.
Okay. We need to know that, just so we can stand top this stuff, 'cause I, I don't want this to be a, a contest here.
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause it can get a personality contest here, and I don't wanna deal with that.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna get the project done.
Yep, I think we're all in agreement there. Okay, and that's, that's it.
Audit, let's talk about audit.
Yeah, well, um...
Can we back up just for one second? On the, on the town hall, maybe you can just refresh my memory, I thought at one of the town meetings that we put in for painting and reconditioning the front entrance of the town hall. Did that go through, or we didn't put that in? I'm trying to think, and I, I couldn't remember if it was in or not.
I, I-
'Cause if it's a separate article-
Did we have something on painting?
There's a separate article for $25,000.
Okay, that $25,000 cannot be spent on anything other than that entrance.
Oh.
So you guys better be careful when you take a whole project, because there's allocated funds for the town hall that go to specific, specific projects.
Wait, Paul's got a, a little list of, here's the actions, and then over where some potential sources of funding are.
I just don't wanna be, you know, all of a sudden we go to do the front entrance, and there's no money.
Well, I just have to relook at that article, but I'm pretty sure that article said the front entrance and other entryways, I'm pretty sure that's the way the language was spelled out.
So that's all that money can be used on?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, but I'll have to look at it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think, my recollection is-
Just don't start spending money that is not allocated for what its purpose is.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it was specific to the front.
I, I thought it all entryways or other entryways.
I think, I think if it's the same article I'm thinking of-
Okay.
Uh, once we found out we have to do something back here, then I said, oh, I think that article will cover that.
Just, just make certain, and if you're not sure, check with town attorney, so we don't get into trouble.
Yeah. Do you still have your copy of this?
Yes.
Okay, there's one for you, there's one for Jan. So this is a proposal for auditing services from-
But let me, let me back up, typically we have had annual audits, not required, but we've been doing them, good management practice, we did not do one, was it for 12, was it, or 13, 12?
12.
Now, the leasing company, we, we got approval for a lease of certain equipment at the last town meeting, that leasing company is looking for a copy of an audit before they'll proceed with that lease. Town treasurer needs an audit completed in order to service the basis for negotiations for a bond to support the water transmission line. Town treasurer, Mr. Winters, has worked to identify some potential sources to conduct this, and how, how it might be worked out, and part of it will be done by one organization and part by another. Anyway, we're, we're running out of ramp space very rapidly here, and we have a proposal from RCA, Roselli, Clark and Associates, CPAs, to provide certain services that appear to be timely, but you have any comment on it, or?
Yeah.
I'd just like to say something before you go, Greg, I talked with Paul last week, well, I talked with Greg last week about hiring Scanlon to do the financials for the town, 'cause Mike just simply can't get them done, so-
That's part of this.
Yeah, well, Paul called, called Scanlon, and, and Scanlon said he'd be able to come in, what, this Wednesday?
He said he'd, they'd be able to start on it this week.
This, this week.
Great.
So we can get that done, and did you call him and ask about a deadline? Because if we can get this, the financials done by the end of the month, the end of September, then we can get this company to finalize everything December first.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
That's their proposed schedule.
The two coincide with one another here.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
When I, um, you know, I called a couple firms, okay? And, um, this firm in particular, though, um, they're giving a lower price, because, you know, Scanlon's gonna be doing the financial statements, okay? But, um, a couple of ones I called, they couldn't make, like, the December thirty-first deadline, okay? 'Cause that's very important, okay? Um, you know, with the, the bonds, as Jeff pointed out. But this firm said they can do it by November thirtieth, which is even better, okay? And I already talked to him, you know, if, if you do, um, award him the, um, contract, he is going to do preliminary audit work, starting probably in a couple of weeks, you know, when Scanlon's done. And then he was gonna come in the week of Columbus Day and even work on it on Columbus Day. I told him I'd come in. And because, see, again, you know, the town needs it so quick that he's going out of his way. I told him I would, you know, accommodate him any way he wants. But anyway, um, the one thing, um, you know, most auditing firms want a three-year contract, okay? 'Cause I'll explain how auditing works. The first year you go in, you have to do, like, preliminary study of all the controls and all that. You don't have to update that until three years later. So a lot of that preliminary work, and that's all, that's required. So, you know, a firm will come in the first year, they probably won't make money. But then in the second and third year, they already know where the weaknesses are, the strengths are. So that, that's, that's a common clause in, in the, um, audit. Now, there's, there's prices in there. For the town, I was gonna be thirteen-five, okay? There is also end-of-year report, the school pays for that. But he included in that proposal four thousand dollars in case Tom Scanlon decides not to do it, like, following two years. Because again, um, if the financials aren't prepared, he's gonna have more work. So that additional four thousand is only if Tom decides not to do, um, the financials next year or the, the following year. And that's a good price.
Question, um, can we award him, or does this thing have to go out for bid?
No, no, it's, um, that's exempt from, um, bid of proposals.
Okay.
Legal services.
We only need thirteen right now, so that's all we're looking at is thirteen-five.
Yep, thirteen-five, that's right. The school pays for that three thousand, okay, out of their budget. That's, they have to have that end-of-year report audited once a year. Now, also, um, I'm gonna call, you know, the leasing company, and once, you know, if I do have an engagement letter, then I'm gonna tell them the audit's gonna be done sometime in November. You know, they'll have a grant, and hopefully, you know, they'll want that work, you know, be, it's gonna be done, you know, soon.
That means we can't purchase anything until this thing is okayed by the, by the leasing company.
But see, I may, you know, as long as we have an engagement letter, at least they know it's gonna be done. 'Cause, you know, but he's binding on the town to November thirtieth, so he has to really complete the audit, and he said he would. And I know this firm.
I move that we hire Roselle, Roselli, Clark and Associates, certified public accountants to do the, uh, do the work.
Audits for fiscal years thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Looking for that page here. I just had it and I lost it.
Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
For year two thousand thirteen.
Fourteen and fifteen.
So we're gonna do three years on...
That's what he was just saying.
Same price, too.
This is a cost leader, uh...
What's that?
Okay.
First year.
Which is good, because now you've got a budget, you know, like I said, um, you know, the price stays the same.
Where does this fall into place with Scanlon?
Oh, yeah, he, this, um, person's already talked to Tom, okay? He called them last week, I know that profound. Um, and so he, well, according to his work, with this person's work, so.
Okay, so Tom's been doing it.
I think, like he said, if, if, you know, I, I believe you signed maybe a one-year proposal or kind of engagement letter for Scanlon. I don't know if it was, you know, for continuous, whatever. But he's just protecting himself. If that's not done, it's gonna take him more work, you know, to, to do a balance sheet for various things like that. And again, you know, if we get him on a schedule, he'll probably do the audit the same time as he's doing this year. Um, you know, we're, you know, I mean, um, this is a good time for audits, okay? And this is sort of fits into a schedule, because a lot of the larger cities in town don't have the audit until, like, late fall. All right? And so, like I said, if we're prepared, you know, every year you'll have, you know, free cash certified early. So that's a win-win situation, in case you have a special time meeting in the fall. And that's the whole thing, um, and everything will be done. So I, I think it's a win situation, yeah.
Okay, so my motion is for the audit for two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Old Business. Oh, uh, an old business. We had talked about, uh, on a continuing basis, we're talking about articles for town meeting, next town meeting. I proposed, I sent around just a note. We add something to create some kind of activity for Hatfield's three-hundred-fiftieth anniversary. Those things take a long time to plan.
My suggestion would be to send the...
Hadley had just had one back, I forgot what year theirs was for, but it, it takes three or four years to get the thing orchestrated.
My suggestion would be to have the, from the board of selectmen, send a note, note to the Historical Commission, and let them know that, um, we'd like maybe them to, to look at how we wanna proceed and, um, to form a committee and, uh, move forward, start moving forward on this.
All, all I'm suggesting here is another add to our town meeting articles is to, it's gonna have to, it'll require some funding.
Oh, absolutely.
Put some amount in it each year for a few years and...
I believe there, I asked Louise, she was here, and there's, I think, eight thousand dollars that was given by the last committee, uh, on the three-hundredth. So that sits in an account, so they have roughly eight thousand, um, to move forward on this one.
That's a good start.
And, uh, they did fundraisings, and, uh, in order to raise money for the three-hundred-fiftieth, you gotta have a nonprofit organization, so it wouldn't be the commission, it would be the society that would take on this, uh, you know, we could ask them to take it on and, and to move forward with it, because they're a nonprofit and they could raise money out in the public sector with no problem at all, so. That's something we should maybe look at.
Okay, well, then let's parse this, so we agree we'll have some kind of article created for town meeting to...
Just in case we need it.
Formulize this activity and create a fund or whatever. And then, second, Paul, if you'd draft some communication to the historical folks, asking them at some point, uh, to come back and chat with us about taking this project on, and what is it they think they might need.
That would be the society, not the commission.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or assuming they're willing to take it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what we're asking them to do.
They're gonna need a lot of help.
I'm sure they'll have committee after committee, the subcommittees and everything else.
Anyone have anything else?
September twelfth, Hampshire County, I know you're gonna be gone. Jan, you going to that or not?
When's this?
This is September twelfth, Thursday.
Selectmen's Association.
We have North District Attorney David Sullivan gonna be there. He's gonna speak, any questions that you may have, um, all about the district attorney and their position and their jobs, and how it's gonna pertain to the town. They're asking police chiefs to attend. Anybody else that would like to attend, uh, if they have any questions, bring them, and, uh, we should have a good turnout.
Let me read that.
It's in your back, in the information section.
If you're gonna go, just let Paul know, so you can let Lydia know. It's five PM, September twelfth.
There you go.
Bluebonnet Diner. There you go. And I'll, I'll get this to the police chief also. Let him know, 'cause I don't know if he, he read that.
I, I just have a couple things.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, just for information purposes, I know that it's always, people ask questions about the recycling. From January to June, uh, the town did recycle seventy tons worth of material, and we received a check for one thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. So I just want people to be aware of that recycling. Every time you recycle, it does come back to the town in money. And the other thing I have is I received a, uh, water abatement for a pool liner, so I'd like to just... They had the pool repaired and followed all the protocols that's in the abatement process. So we're asking that, uh, an abatement of one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety cents on the water side of the bill for Thomas and Brenda Wickles for their pool liner.
On the water side of the bill? A sewer side?
I mean, on the sewer side of the bill, excuse me.
Okay.
Sewer side of the bill.
You recommend approval? Phil?
I recommend approval of the abatement.
Did you calculate how many gallons this was?
It's thirty-four thousand gallons.
Okay. All right.
I moved in.
Is there a motion to approve the request for abatement, uh, sewer for Mr. and Mrs. Thomas Wickles?
I move that we, uh, award the abatement to Thomas and Brenda Wickles of Ten Pleasantview Drive for the sewer part, acknowledging that the, the liner took thirty-two thousand gallons, and it was calculated as such and deducted the sewer for the amount of one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety cents.
A second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I just put that in secret. Thank you. That's all I have.
Jan, do you have anything else?
Uh, nope.
Ed, anything else?
No, let's see, we've got, uh, some planning board meetings coming up in our package. I don't know if you wanna bring those up.
I'll, I'll do it. We've, we've mentioned those in...
Paul will be on vacation August thirty-first through September ninth.
No, that's key.
Key.
I'm sorry.
For information, the planning board is having a hearing on a request for special permit with site panel approval for September. An application filed by Mr. Charles Labby, twenty-four Lindsay Road, to buy, sell, exchange second-hand motor vehicles. Another for, for September, application filed by Bell Atlantic Mobile, doing business as Verizon Wireless, uh, the Brockway Smith property, one-twenty-five Chestnut Street, for the purpose of replacing two of the existing antenna panels. Uh, another one for the fourth, two applications filed by Northeast Enterprises, property owned by Northeast Enterprises, the two-thirty-seven Main Street, for, excuse me, for the premises on Elm Street, Hatfield. Currently zoned rural residential, proposed to be subdivided into two lots, with each parcel to accommodate a six-unit townhouse structure of twelve units. The Conservation Commission will hold a public hearing on the fifth of September, under an application of Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and the Hatfield Protection Bylaw, filed by Kimberly Handel, El Terrace Renewables, doing business as Real Goods Solar, one-hundred-and-forty Chestnut Street, for the purpose of installing a ground-mounted solar array at one-hundred-and-forty Chestnut Street. Uh, that's just general information.
Good.
Okay. Paul, do you have any last?
I'm all set.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.